We have a bill, but we never did that.
All right. Good evening and welcome to our January 5th organizational meeting of the West Claremont Board of Education. Can we call the meeting to order Mr. Ramano?
Mrs. Delaney?
Present.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Present.
Mr. Chumley?
Present.
Mr. Patton?
Present.
All present.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Subject 1.03. Do you have additional roll call?
No.
Okay, that's more all taken care of? All right. So our next item is 2.01, nomination of board president. I would like to accept any nominations for president of the West Claremont Board of Education for the 2023 school year.
I'd like to nominate Michelle Delaney.
Second.
You've heard the... Oh, any other nominations?
Move to close the nomination?
Uh, we... I move to close the nominations.
In a second?
In a second?
I'll second it.
Take the roll to close the nominations. Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Five yes to close the nominations. And then you want to do a roll call vote, and this would be the vote to affirm Mrs. Delaney as president. Take that roll call vote?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Five yes.
And then do we?
Mr. Hill? Raise your right hand. Hi, state your name.
Hi, Michelle Delaney.
Swear that I will support...
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of the president of the board.
To perform the...
Duties.
Duties of the president of board.
Of education of the West Claremont Local School District.
Of education of the West Claremont Local School District.
Claremont County, Ohio.
Claremont County, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll be taking nominations for the position of vice president of the Board of Education.
I nominate Michael Chumley.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Like to move to close the nominations? In a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Ramano?
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Five yes to close the nomination. And this would be a roll call vote to affirm the nomination of Mr. Chumley as vice president of the Board of Education. Take call roll.
Yes, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Five yes. Take the oath. Raise your right hand, please. Hi, state your name.
Hi, Michael Chumley.
Swear that I will support...
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of the president.
Perform the duties of the vice president.
Vice president, thank you. Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the West Claremont Local School District.
Of the West Claremont Local School District.
Claremont County, Ohio.
Claremont County, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay. Item 2.05 is to establish times, dates, and locations of the regular business, or the regular meetings for 2023. And everyone should have received the attachment with the board dates and times. I would like to move to approve the suggested schedule of the regular meetings for the Board of Education.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Any discussion?
Did we realize that when we scheduled this February 27th, the following Monday, like a week later, we were having another board meeting? As opposed to sticking with the second and fourth of that month? We went to the one and the third? So February 27th, March 6th?
Was that moved because of the holiday at the end of March?
Oh, yeah. It looks like there are two weeks between the March meetings.
And then...
February 20th is the president's day?
That's probably why.
I wonder, yeah, I wonder if it's because of that holiday.
The March 6th and the 20th?
No, February 6th. Oh, I'm sorry, the 13th. And then if you went to tw- you went to the other 20th.
I'm not talking about February, I'm talking about March.
Yeah, yeah, but we're saying that that maybe...
The 27th is a Monday. Seven days later, we would have another board meeting?
Maybe that was moved because of the February issue.
There's two, already two in February.
Yeah, but the 20th. It should have been, what, February 6th and 20th?
The first and third of the month?
Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry, I had that wrong.
The 13th and the 27th?
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. I didn't know.
February 20th is a holiday.
Right.
Talking March.
I'm in February. So you're looking...
We're looking at the 27th of February, and then seven days later is March 6th.
But the week before that is a holiday.
It's the week.
Is the February 20th is a holiday. That's why I pushed it a week.
But I think she's wondering why it's the sixth and the 20th as opposed to the 13th and the 27th of March.
Is it spring?
Nope, spring breaks the first week.
The first week of April.
Will there be much business for us to have seven days later? And then wait a whole month from March 20th to April 17th?
See, I noticed that one. That's a long.
I think Natasha and the... Natasha and I may be at the end of March speaking at a conference. Think that March 20...
27th.
7th.
We should have been, that we should have had a meeting then, and we... Because it should have been the 13th and the 27th.
Let me check.
Right? Am I looking at that properly? It should have been the 13th and the 27th.
Nope, we're not till the 30th, so we're okay there. We're okay on the 27th. I don't know if she had anything else.
The motion on the floor is to accept it as is. We can accept it, but could we look at those dates?
Sure.
If we can look at that, we want to change it, we can make a change.
I can tell you for sure I will not be here on the 6th of March. I have a commitment the first Monday of the month.
Any other discussion?
Ready to roll?
Yes, please.
Is it because of the town, because there's a town hall? That would stop that from happening.
Except for the roll, it would be Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Five yes.
Okay. Item 2.06, board committees. Mr. Gettler provided us with the, um, the proposed, a final version of the proposed 2023 committees. We still are in need of a student liaison and a legislative liaison.
I'm going to do the student.
Okay. Mr. Rudy, thank you.
I don't know what legislative liaison is, but...
Wait, did you do that last year, Michael?
Did that where you went to the meeting?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Sorry. Didn't know the term.
Do you want to serve in that capacity again?
It's very fun.
What it?
It's what I did at the...
Conference.
Okay.
I can do that.
I think Patton should experience it.
Legislative liaison with the OSBA delegate.
Okay.
Okay.
Ryan raised his hand.
I did it la- last year, two years ago, so, okay.
It's exciting.
I remember.
Okay. Were there any other, were there any questions, or is everyone good with the committee assignments? Okay. I would like to propose that we accept the board committee assignments as recorded. And is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Rudy?
Mr. Rudy? Mr. Back to it, was Mr. Chumley?
Mr. Chumley, sorry.
Roll call?
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Five yes?
Item 2.07 is renewal of the organizational memberships. Um, we have a recommendation to approve membership in the following professional organizations: National School Board Association, Ohio School Board Association, which services include OSBA Legal Assistance Fund, School Law Summary, School Management News, and Briefcase Subscriptions, Ohio Education Policy Institute, Government Finance Officer Association, Alliance for High Quality Education, and for Consortium of State School Board Associations. Is there a motion?
Some move.
In a second?
Second.
Michael and Mr. Rudy?
Can I ask a question with that? Is the Government Finance Officer Association a new one for us? I don't remember.
That had, that's always been there. It is an organizational membership, not an individual. So there's an individual aside, but these are the organizational memberships. So it's not new. It's new in this listing because it's organizational.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
And is there a savings with workers' comp through OSBA still?
So on OSBA, there's a savings on one of the preferred vendors for the management service.
Okay.
So that's, that's where you're seeing that in the summary. I don't know if you saw that or not.
I just remember that coming up years ago. I'm worried, but it still may be true. Okay?
Any other discussion? Mr. Ramano, roll call?
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Five yes?
Okay. Item 2.08, appointment of board members for 2023. Didn't we just take care of this during the committee?
Some of them.
These are outside the committees.
Okay. Alrighty, so we have, the board should consider the appointment of members or designees to serve as the legislative liaison to the Ohio School Board Association, student achievement liaison to the Ohio School Board Association, education foundation liaison, um, business advisory council liaison, and Great Oaks liaison.
We do have, Mr. Patton said he would be the legislative liaison, correct, earlier this evening? And I think the board previously approved me to do the Great Oaks. And so there, you need an education foundation liaison and the business advisory council liaison.
I'll do the business advisory.
Mr. Chumley, are you doing the educational foundation?
I can do that.
I saw that.
I saw it on the minutes, yeah.
And then I would like to do the student achievement liaison.
Okay. Um, do we need a motion, or just do you disappoint those?
I'll do it. You can, you can do an emotion for it. It's an action down there, so.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve those appointment, appointed members to the different designations?
So.
In a second?
Second.
Mr. Ramano, roll call?
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Five yes.
Item 2.09 is designating individuals to serve as designated to hear and decide suspension and expulsion appeals. Uh, the recommendation that the board approve the resolution designated individuals to serve as the designee for the Board of Education to hear the suspension and expulsion appeals as presented. And, um, do we comment on its, I know who it is, but, yeah, it's, um...
Does it happen?
Tom Gerber.
There is Jenny.
It's Phil's... Thank you. Um, so, yeah, Mr. Filsonkovich is designated to act as the suspension appeals. And Dr. Foltz will act as our designee in expulsion appeals. And Mr. Eric Duel is assigned to act as expulsion appeals as well.
The second one?
This one doesn't say Joe Moon.
Mr. Moon?
No, that doesn't say that on this one. And also on Tom, this copy doesn't say Joe Moon. Yeah. So Mr. Filsonkovich and Joe Moon as suspension, Dr. Foltz and Mr. Duel as expulsion. Can I have a motion to approve those recommendations?
Some move.
In a second?
Second.
Mr. Ramano, roll call?
Mr. Rudy?
Oh, sorry. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Five yes?
Item 3.0 is public comment. Do we have any speakers at the board meeting tonight?
Do not see any listed. Any cards submitted?
Superintendent's business. Mr. Gettler?
Well, thank you guys for letting me join you guys tonight. We, uh, we hope Natasha feels better and, uh, is feeling better tomorrow. So our first line is our overnight field trip request, and we have Mrs. Preston.
Good evening. I'm gonna first, before I present both of the field trips, we have two field trips, both from West Claremont High School, and for your approval. I just want to first start by saying that one of the things that we're really wanting to work with our building principals on is for field trips that are sort of ongoing and kind of standing trips that have occurred like year after year to ensure that there's no reason why we can't get some of those things approved almost at the beginning of the year. If the plan is, you know, for example, one of the first field trip that we're going to seek your approval for is the West Claremont Alpha Performance Group. This is a trip now that's been happening. I think this might be the fifth year that it's, that it's occurred. We want to ensure that prior to any, whether it's fundraising or information sharing with families or with students, that we've ensured that you've had time to approve that prior to any of those things. So I just want to first start by saying, know that that's something that we want to avoid having to bring these to you, you know, a month even before it happens. There's really, you know, that, we just want to shore up those processes. So I just want to first start by saying that, that we, that that's something that we're actively working on, ensuring. So with that being said, the first field trip, or the first trip that we have, overnight trip for your approval, is for our West Claremont High School for the, um, the Alpha group. As I said, this is a trip that they have taken now, you know, for multiple years. It's really kind of a retreat that allows them some time away where they're really trying to work on solidifying their choreography, their, um, their songs, their music, so that they really can be, it's kind of a really great opportunity for them to get some really intensive work together. It takes place in Hillsborough at a place called Butler Springs. That's the same facility that they've had this trip, you know, year after year. In fact, I believe that when Mr. Ryle was...
2007.
Yeah, involved with this is kind of like when it first, when it started. So it is kind of a longstanding tradition for them to, to take this trip. So I think since it's not a consent agenda, we'll have to take them each individually. So that's the first trip that we're requesting your approval for that overnight trip to Butler Springs in Hillsborough for the WC Alpha.
You've heard the recommendation for approval of the overnight field trip. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Mr. Rudy, in a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Patton, any discussion?
Thank you for trying to get things to us.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just best practice for us to look with them to do that.
Mr. Roll call?
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Five yes?
Okay, the second overnight field trip request that we have for you this evening is for West Claremont High School as well. This is for the girls varsity basketball team. We're seeking, they're seeking approval to be able to participate in the classic in the country contest, which is in Berlin, Ohio, which is kind of near the Cleveland, the Cleveland area, I believe. The trip also, in the same way that I talked about the WC Alpha trip, while we know that there are sometimes things that come up where, whether it's cheerleading or basketball, where you qualify to participate in something that happened, you know, because of your performance the weekend before, this isn't necessarily that, and so we want to, again, make sure that with trips like this where there is some advanced planning, that we're able to bring those to you as early as possible. So we're also working on that with our athletic department as well. But they're seeking approval because of the distance. It requires, you know, some overnight stay. And attached to the request, you'll see kind of the itinerary for when they're leaving, when they plan to return back, you know, for the trip. It does leave on Saturday, January 14th, and they plan to return on Sun, um, excuse me, on Monday, January 16th. That is over a holiday, so it does not require students to miss the show on, on the 16th. Are there any questions? If not, I will seek your approval for, to, I will seek your approval for the overnight field trip for the girls' basketball team to travel to.
Any questions for Mrs. Preston? Okay. Um, you've heard the recommendation. I would like to make the recommendation that we approve the, the overnight stay, but, but have to, have the ability to explore the, the transportation avenues in order to, you know, with it being, you know, a far distance, you know, the recommend, the, the proposal right now is that a yellow bus through Peterman is utilized. But I think, you know, with it being over that holiday weekend, we would have some, you know, complications if, you know, it's the weather, it, it, long distances, if they break down. You know, we, we want the well-being of the students to be the best...
Absolutely.
That we can provide for them. So is there a, a motion? Or I made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I wanted to make a comment. As much as we appreciate you trying to get the documents on board docs timely, getting it from the buildings timely. There was modifications to this untimely, as recent as this afternoon, and it would have been nice if we would have had a little bit more time to understand the changes before being given this to a board.
Yeah, I completely understand that. And I would just add, as it relates to transportation, we're happy to explore that for this trip. And, and one of our goals, I think, would try to be to be consistent in establishing some administrative guidelines that would allow for just consistency of how we go about making decisions where, for when, for when a yellow bus may be appropriate and when may, it may be appropriate to explore alternative modes of transportation. So we're happy to, to do that, not just for this trip, but to be able to create those consistency. I think it's just really important for us to have in place.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Mr. Ramano?
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Five yes?
All right. Item 4.03, standard authorization for the superintendent of the calendar year for 2023.
Yeah, this is a procedural that we do every year. These are the things that are set in policy. Items that are included in this are the authorizations during the school year 2023. This includes giving superintendent abilities for higher staff in between board meetings, separate resignations and retirements between board meetings, approved work schedules, authorization of superintendent or designee or assistant superintendents to suspend, authorization for our law firms, for West Claremont School District to work with them as well, authorization to attend conferences and meetings and conventions and activity accounts. Like I said, these are all set in policy that we approve each year. So I would ask the board to approve the standing authorization as presented.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Can I ask for a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Brinkman, and a second?
I'll second it.
Mister Patton? Any discussion? Mister Ramano?
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mister Patton?
Yes.
Mister Rudy?
Yes.
Mister Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Five yes?
Item four point oh four, state and federal programs.
Again, another that we approve each year. Um, these are primary federal applications and partnerships, um, of the following as presented below. I won't need to read through all those, but you have those, uh, presented. And so we would, we would ask the board to please, um, uh, approve, authorize the superintendent to determine participation in these programs as presented.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mister Rudy, and a second?
So moved.
Mrs. Brinkman? Any discussion? Mister Ramano?
Mister Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mister Chumley?
Yes.
Mister Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Five yes?
Superintendent's comments?
Um, first, Happy New Year to everyone. Two thousand twenty-three is, is gonna be an exciting year, and it's gonna be exciting as, as we get together, uh, in our retreat and look at all the great things that we're doing, some of the challenges that face us over the next twelve months and, and later. Uh, I do want to thank our maintenance and custodial staff. Uh, I don't know if you've heard, but, um, December twenty-third, major water break above my old office. And so, uh, the main office, um, on the twenty-third, so we had people in working. Twenty-third, Christmas Eve, um, Chuck, all the maintenance people, uh, Larry was there, and he was on the phone, you know, because it was close to, to one of our tech closets as well. So there were a lot of people working on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, um, that I think we need to thank, um, for coming in. Because if you saw the pictures, you know that it, it was a mess, and so, uh, we, we want to thank them. So, um, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, item, uh, five point oh one, treasurer's business and treasurer's authorizations.
All right, thank you. Item five point oh one is the treasurer's authorization for twenty twenty-three. Um, listed on those, uh, as a recommendation, um, to be approved. It's first to enable the treasurer to carry out the necessary duties, responsibility, including involving finances, fiscal and, and general operations. Second, uh, request for tax advances. We do that twice a year, uh, once at the, um, at the beginning of the year and the second time in, uh, June for July. Second year advance. Authorize the treasurer to invest interim in active funds. Authorize the treasurer to amend and supplement the appropriations. Authorize the treasurer to establish a board service fund. Authorize the treasurer to process the payment of bills and employee payroll. Authorize the treasurer, um, as the official signature for the district on contracts and agreements. Authorize the treasurer to exercise then and now certificate for purchases. Authorize the treasurer to transfer and advance funds typically from the general fund to the other local, state, and federal funds. Authorizes treasurer to establish bank accounts. Um, we do, uh, do the depositary accounts once every five years. Those have already been established from January of twenty twenty-two through December of thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. Authorize public records training, um, each year with each new board sitting. Um, you're authorizing myself to be your representative, uh, for the training for the, um, public records. And then authorize the treasurer to pay position bond premiums, uh, for the board president, superintendent, and the treasurer. Um, last one is authorize the waiver of reading of the minutes, um, at the board meetings to do that. Um, as Mister Gephardt has, had stated, um, these authorizations, along with authorization for the superintendent, are really for, you know, to can, make sure that bus- business continues in between the board meetings as things take place to do that. Also let you know that neither the superintendent nor I take that authorization lightly. After the years I've been in the business, I take that very seriously, and I know the superintendent does too, um, in order to do that. So item five point oh one, um, is recommended, and a request for the authorization for the treasurer's authorization for twenty twenty-three.
You've heard the recommendation of the treasurer. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mister Chumley, and a second?
Second.
Mister Rudy? Any discussion? Mister Ramano?
Mister Chumley?
Yes.
Mister Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mister Patton?
Yes.
Five yes? Thank you. Uh, treasurer comments, uh, just a couple. Um, first of all, Mister Rudy, appreciate your taking of the helm in twenty twenty-two and leading, uh, the board and, uh, the superintendent, myself, and, and the team of people, um, that the superintendent has with it. That's much, much appreciated, um, during the season.
Thank you.
Mrs. Delaney, I look forward to your role as president this year. Um, it was great having you as the vice president last year and prep for that. Mister Chumley, look forward for you being vice president, um, and the experience that Mrs. Brinkman has brought to the table, the experience that Mister Patton brings to the table as we go on into the third and fourth year, right?
Yeah. For yourself.
My second.
Yeah, for you.
Yeah.
So to do that, so that's much appreciated. Um, look forward to the, the new calendar year. We're halfway through the school year. Um, and, uh, I, I remain very much excited about being with this district as I had two and a half years ago. So look forward to the exciting things that are going on with our, with West Claremont schools.
Thank you. Board business, board comments. Mrs. Brinkman?
Just want to say Happy New Year to everyone, and, um, thank you for allowing me to serve you for eleven years. And we are entering my twelfth and final year on the board. And, um, excited to, uh, work with you this last year, and, uh, excited where the, the new year's gonna take us.
Mister Chumley?
Yeah, I hope everyone had a good holiday break. Uh, I hope everyone stayed healthier than my household.
I love her hair.
I'm good now, hopefully. If I get it again, I'm giving up.
I have bubbles. I can give you a bubble.
I might be. I hope Natasha has a speedy recovery. Look forward to serving for yet another year, um, for this great district. This year as vice president, honored for that. And hude day.
I too want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Um, and again, I want to piggyback with, uh, Mister Gephardt as far as thanking all of the individuals that came out and worked, um, to get the building back up and running. And, uh, I did see the pictures, and that was quite a mess. So I do appreciate their hard work and dedication for the district. Uh, our maintenance crew is by far, uh, top of the line, so I do appreciate that. And I look forward to a, uh, great, uh, great year.
Mister Rudy?
Um, Happy New Year. Uh, buen an de, prospero nuevo. Um.
Lost Mister Gephardt.
See?
We MC.
We MC.
I wanted to thank the, all the West Claremont people, um, that I know that reached out to me, um, got texts, uh, ran into people at the grocery, uh, lots of Facebook comments, um, for the loss of my mother. It was very much appreciated, made it things very much easier, so I appreciate that from everyone. And just looking forward to a great new year. I was ready to go back to school after being off for two weeks. Didn't think I'd be that way, but.
Wow, you never say that.
Monday and Tuesday, Monday I was not happy. It was my easiest commute to Bethel, but I kept thinking, it's a federal holiday, West Claremont people are not working. I was a little jealous, but it was good.
Fine. Um, Happy New Year. Um, thank you for entrusting me to be, to lead the board this year. I'm very excited about it, and, uh, will be looking to everybody for, um, your guidance and support. I hope everybody had a great holiday. Um, when, when the lines broke at the high school on the twenty-third, I had flashbacks to my, my childhood because my, I, the house I grew up in, at my parents', um, our water lines broke in that, like, winter of seventy, whatever it was. And we had water coming through the ceiling and down the, it was a nightmare. And I could just, that's all I thought it was, like, oh my gosh. But, um, so, you know, the, the, like Mister Patton said, our maintenance and facility staff, I mean, it, it, they're just second to none. We can't, we can't be blessed with a better group of, with, of people to, you know, pick it all back up and, and, uh, get us where we need to be. Any other comments?
Do we know what we're doing on Saturday yet? We're supposed to have a retreat, but with Natasha being ill?
I've not heard from her. And I, I don't have an update on that, I haven't talked to her since this morning, so.
That's a good thing.
And if, and we don't have anything pressing, maybe we should postpone it. I mean, give her time to recover and get back to work and finish the agenda and all of that to make it amenable.
We'll, we'll let her make that decision, but as you know, she's got something on her mind, that's what we're doing.
Yes, it is.
I just would not feel comfortable without her being there.
Correct.
And I don't want her to feel like she has to be there because.
We can reschedule.
I was gonna say, we don't have anything pressing. It's not like we have, um, a, a levy that we need to get onto the, you know, the ballot and things like that. There's nothing pressing, we're in good position.
Okay, we'll.
Let her know that we're in support of.
Yeah. Yeah. Is that enough?
I wasn't born when your water line broke, so I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was waiting for someone to say that.
I wasn't born yet.
Don't call me, Michael.
I was ten years old.
When she said seventy-seven, I'm like, seventy-seven?
Yeah.
It was fine.
It was awesome.
We were at school for a month. We were at school for a month.
River was frozen, it was awesome.
My dad was on the red flag. Five days.
It was awesome. Do we have any reason to go to executive session? Alrighty, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second it.
And Mister Patton, Mister Chumley, and Mister Patton?
Okay.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mister Chumley? Yes. Mister Patton?
Yes.
Mister Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Five yes?
All right, and our next meeting will be on January twenty-third. Thank you and have a great evening.